This conference will now be recorded.
Gary, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Oh, yep.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I couldn't get audio to come over that computer for some reason.
Sure. Sometimes that happens.
I think we should use carrier pitches next time.
Hopefully this isn't. No.
Let's get started then, council. I would like to call the regular scheduled council meeting for the City of Nisswa to order. It is Wednesday, April 15th, 2020. It is 7:03 PM. We will sadly forego the pledge of allegiance this evening. And we will move right to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, the consent calendar is published.
Second by Hoff. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Didn't hear Gary. You there, Gary?
I saw the Mal say aye, but we couldn't hear him.
Yeah, it shows his phone is muted right now.
Oh, he just might need to do a setting.
Yeah.
It did. Gary thumbs up? Aye.
Can't hear you.
He's working on it.
He's working on it, but...
Did you hit 1/6 pound to audio pin? Enable audio pin. Did you do that?
Just out of curiosity, did you let the city engineer and attorney know?
It says the audio pin is now pound 2/8 pound.
Fill the information if they wanted to dial in.
Perfect. Great job.
Okay. Maybe try hanging up and calling back. We'll give you a minute. No problem.
You consented. Thumbs up, Paul.
Yep. Actually, yeah, well, he's calling back in. He gave a thumbs up for the aye votes for that, so.
Can you hear if we move on?
Yes.
He can hear if we're... Okay. Very good. We will... We will... We don't really have to do open forum, do we?
Well, we don't. We modified it, and we did post a notice that said for questions or comments that they should be submitted ahead of the meeting, and we have not received anything, so we don't have anything.
So for open forum this evening, we have no questions submitted or comments. So we will move on to reports. This evening, the city attorney and city engineer are not present. Did not have any questions or concerns that they wanted to bring forward. So we will just have the city administrators report this evening.
Thank you. The only item I wanted to just touch on quickly tonight, I know I've sent more emails than normal to the council, so thank you for digesting all the information that I've shared over the last week or so. But I did want to share something as far as what our staff is doing to help lend a hand to those in need and participate volunteer during this time. And a couple of things. So our Parks and Rec Director, Matthew Hill, has done some work volunteering with the outreach program. He's gone and picked up supplies for the program and has done some packing meals for them. And I just want to say thank you to him for that. Maggie Wettler, our finance specialist, has been busy making masks out of fabric. I think she's well over 100 masks so far that she's donated to various organizations, some to our staff as well. And I think she's shooting for maybe close to 200 at this point. So I just wanted to say thank you to her. I think that's an awesome effort to do. And then our fire department has been doing a birthday salute program that they are driving by with their engines and being accompanied by our police department and other agency jurisdictions to do a fun birthday salute to our area kids for their birthdays. They've done at least 11, and I believe they have another 11 or 12 scheduled, that they will do that through May 4th or up to May 4th. And that's been a fun... You might have seen some of the Facebook posts about it. So it's been a fun thing, and I think the kids have gotten a real kick out of it. So I just wanted to highlight that and say thank you to our staff who have gone above and beyond to help those in need during this time. And that is my report unless you have questions for me.
Hearing none, we will move on. Thank you very much, Jenny. Under new business this evening, item E1, approve Roundhouse Brewery liquor license application.
I will move to approve Roundhouse Brewery's liquor license application as presented.
Mike, yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ryan. Any questions on the motion? Yes, you're right. All those in favor say aye by roll call vote.
You have to call out each person, and then they'll say.
Yes, you're right. I did the last month. I just warmed up here. Councilman Ryan? Councilman Johnson?
Give us a thumbs up. Okay.
Councilman Jacobson?
I had an audio problem. I had a question, but I'll vote yes and ask the question after.
Okay. Councilman Hoff?
Yes, aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Councilman Jacobson, question?
Yes, is this subject to the approval of the sale of the property to Roundhouse? I assume that it's not been sold yet. And if it's not, if it's subject to getting the permit and it's not sold to Roundhouse yet, I think we should tie it to the sale.
Yes, would agree.
Yes, that will be part of that. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, obviously businesses look to find if they can get a license before they purchase. So it's kind of the which came first, the chicken or the egg.
Right.
So we'll make sure that it is tied to the purchase of that particular property. Item E2, resolution approving county project within municipal corporate limits. We need a motion and a vote on that.
I'll move the resolution.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Many questions on that motion?
My understanding is that we don't have any cost involved with this portion of the project, right?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call vote. We'll start out with Councilman Hoff.
Aye.
Councilman Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Okay, thank you. And Councilman Ryan?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item E3, resolution relating to parking restrictions regarding County Road 13 project.
I have a question, if I may?
Yes.
I noticed in the upper right-hand corner of the page, it says it's dated April 2007. But down in the body, it says April 2020. Is there a reason there's an April 2007 in the upper right-hand corner?
That was the last date. The form was updated. And last time, I probably remembered to wipe that out, and I didn't this time. So I will remove it from that form.
Did we get a motion? A motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any questions? Hearing none. Councilman Johnson? Councilman Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryan?
Yes.
Councilman Hoff?
Yes.
Item E3 is approved.
One quick thing.
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Tom just texted me, told me that he is listening in, just in case.
Oh, Tom Pearson.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Welcome, Tom. Item E4, resolution for Hazelwood Drive Bridge.
I'll move.
Motion by Jacobson, second by Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilman Hoff?
Aye.
Councilman Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilman Ryan? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Thumbs up. Okay. Very good. That item E4 passes. E5, authorized bids for Hazelwood Drive Bridge project. This is for the milling and repaving of Hazelwood?
Nope, this is for the bridge reconstruction.
I just read that.
That was the acceptance of the money that state gave.
Sure.
I'll make the motion that we advertise for bids as projected in E5.
Okay. Motion by Ryan?
Second. Jacobson.
Any pick. That's a Jenny's choice.
I think that was Mike.
Any questions on that motion? Hearing none. Councilman Ryan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye. Can you hear me now?
Yay! Is that a yay?
That's a yay.
Okay. Councilman Hoff?
Aye or yay?
Okay. Very good. Councilman Jacobson?
Yes.
Or a yes?
Just had to be different, yeah.
Right.
Item E5 passes. Jenny?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I wanted to also let you know Mark Allen is also listening on the phone now, so he is with us.
Welcome, Mark. Next on the agenda this evening is item E6, authorized bids for Hazelwood Drive Smiley Road Improvement Project. Discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we advertise Hazelwood Smiley South.
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion on that motion?
I have one question. Do we have to directional drill the 3-inch forest main, which is from the south end of Hazelwood to where it would meet up with Lower Roy Lake Road and Hazelwood, that intersection there? Do we have to include that, or does that automatically include it if we do this? Or do we have to accept, or do we have to add, do I have to add that?
That'll be included as an alternate option for us to decide when we get the bits back. So we'll have all the information. Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilman Hoff?
Aye.
Councilman Ryan? Item E6 on our agenda is approved. Next, item E7, approve engagement letter between City of Nisswa and PFM Financial Advisors LLC.
A question for Jenny.
Yes.
How has been their response to your questions and inquiries over the past year? Satisfactory or not?
Yes, extremely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is a budgeted item, I'm assuming?
It is, yes. Yes. And I just, I noticed before the meeting, there's not a signature line for the city. So if this is approved, I would just ask also, you can authorize me to sign it? Or I suppose the mayor could sign at the bottom too, but I just noticed a technicality, so.
Okay. Very good. I would entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Hoff, second by Jacobson. Roll call vote. Councilman Ryan?
Aye.
Councilman Hoff?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jacobson?
Aye.
Item E7 on our agenda this evening passes. Item E8, recommendation from Liquor Committee regarding compensation for liquor employees during pandemic. Discussion on that?
Just a question. There's no start date on this, and I assume that it ends when we go back to regular hours and everything else. But it's not anyplace listed here as the start time and when it ends.
Hopefully on the memo you have, at the bottom where it's underlined, it indicates that there would be... So this is hours worked between March 10th and May 3rd. So there was a start and an end date.
Okay. What happens if it goes past May 3rd? Do we have to do this over again?
My recommendation to the committee, and I think the committee was supportive of this, is that this is a one-time adjustment. We certainly can't predict really how everything's going to play out for the rest of the year. But at least we can do something for right now based on what's happened. I think that was sort of where the committee landed as far as the recommendation.
So I've been asking around numerous businesses and so on. And the probably 2/3 to 75% of those I've asked have given a $2 an hour raise during this time and with timeframes similar, kind of following the governor's decree. And there have been a couple that said $2.50 an hour. My concern is that if we, as a city, do something more than what everyday citizens are being compensated, I'm not so sure how well that would be received. Because I think there's a lot of feelings out there that government gets more than the everyday person does. And this is, and this is in a way slightly different because it is a for-profit business. It's not actually quote-unquote government employees. But it still does represent all the City of Nisswa views our spending. And that's my comments about it. I guess something I would say $2 to $2.50 I would be more comfortable with.
Was there any discussion on this being retroactive over to our first responders, too?
No.
No, there, no.
I've been asking, I've been talking to businesses and different citizens around the community that some who are still working, some who are laid off, and the attitude is mixed. I also heard from a few employees, a few employees, and, you know, I guess, put it bluntly, their concern is why them and all of us? Fair question, I guess. Yeah, I just got off my shift at the angle. You come across a lot of people, there is a risk there, there's a risk for everybody with this thing right now. Because I don't think anybody really knows what's happening. But the businesses in town that I talk to that are doing the same thing, like the mayor said, we're all at $2 an hour. So, you know. But I will say that if we do this, we should anticipate other city employees saying, hey, what about all of us? And have some kind of a, not throw Jenny under the bus here, but have some direction from the council as to what... There is a difference if you're working by yourself out in the woods or something like that versus in a retail store. So, I mean, it's not all apples to apples. But what do we want to give the city administrator for? Or how do we want to deal with the rest of the employees in town?
Has anybody, John, did you see the city's response to that question?
I think.
There was a memo, I'm not sure, was it a memo or a copy, or did everybody get that?
The council on email, but John was working. I don't know if he got it.
Okay.
I sent it today, I did not.
Yeah.
I think that...
We do, okay.
Yeah, we do. Jenny did respond to one employee. And I had, I received it, I read it, and I thought it was well-stated. And which basically it said, and I'll be paraphrasing for sure and making up things as I go along, but that people working, you know, the employees working at Spirit are involved with potentially several hundred customers per day, where other city employees are rather protected because of either work at home, working here at City Hall with the doors locked to the public, or out and around in the community where they're not in close, tight quarters as those at Spirits are. Any other, Jenny, if anything you want to add?
No, that was, yeah, basically the comments I had, so I think maybe my comment.
Yeah, I had a comment, just that Spirits pickle employees are, you know, on the front lines of facing the general public where the rest of the city employees, you know, not to diminish what they're doing at these times, are not face-to-face, our windows not open in City Hall. People may be inconvenienced right now by not having their normal workspace and are working from home, but it's merely an inconvenience as opposed to a hardship or a risk that they're taking by working from home. That's my opinion. I think they should get something. I'm in line. Brian's looked at all his numbers, from all the numbers that he's showing were up significantly this year as opposed to last year. I don't think it'll hurt the business at all. So, you know, with all that being said, a lot of other companies out there are either furloughing, laying off, reducing salaries. I know a number of people that have gotten their salaries cut. So if they're not on the front lines taking risks, I don't think, you know, they are necessarily in need of a pay raise at this time for outside of the pickle and the spirits.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We concur with the recommendation of the increase, but it's only between March 10th and terminates on May 3rd period.
I'll second.
Are we all looking at $3 or $2 or?
The recommendation in the letter was three.
I'll just state that I would not vote yes on that. Do we have a second? Yeah, Gary, Gary's second?
I'll second then.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call. Ryan?
I am here, definitely.
Sorry.
You said Ryan. I heard Brian. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, no.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hoff?
Aye.
Councilman Jacobson?
Aye.
That motion carries. I'm a nay. Item E9, approved quotes from High Tech Construction and MCI Carpet for improvements at the Pickle Factory. These are upgrades that cities being required to do for state compliance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Yes.
The quote sheet, they list $293.70 tax on the material. Is that taxable to us?
I'll let Jenny answer that.
I believe so because the Pickle is a for-profit entity, and it's not general city operations. But I can definitely confirm and adjust if there's a way for us to be tax exempt, we can do it.
Do we pay tax on everything else the Pickle does?
Offhand, I don't know. I assume we do, but it's a good question.
You know, there is a... I'm trying to relate. If work is being, if work is being, I'm trying to think about construction. If it's through, and I don't know what that's regarding, if it's construction material...
It is, yeah.
The contractor would be providing and doing, yes, we would pay tax on that. If it was a subcontractor and they were providing material and labor, we would not, as a... We would not pay tax on it.
Well, just bring up the question, and I'll have Jenny take a look at that. That's all.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
I'll move to approve the quotes from High Tech and MCR Cover 1 for improvements for the Pickle.
Second.
Second, I'll do it.
Any questions on that motion?
Were there any other bids received?
There was not. We had a difficult time getting other quotes from contractors, just probably based on their workload. High Tech is familiar with the building, but we did reach out.
Yeah. Okay.
Hearing no questions, we will roll call vote. Councilman Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hoff?
Aye.
Councilman Ryan?
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item E10, proposal to reduce liquor license fees for the 2020-2021 license year.
I can briefly just give a summary of the memo that I prepared. The county recently approved a reduction in their license fees for the upcoming year just to help provide some financial assistance in the ways they could to our local businesses. And so I followed the same that they did just for consistency, assuming this question might come down the line with our businesses here in the upcoming months with our liquor renewals as well. And so the impact would be a loss of revenue of approximately $2,800 to the city. But that was my recommendation.
This would be for the time period June 2020 to June 2021?
Correct, for just the one upcoming renewal year.
What percentage is that, Jenny? I mean, I don't know if you said, I was reading something.
It's a, what, a third?
About a third?
Of the fee, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion as we, uh, set the proposal, where we implement the proposal, reduce the license fees for the 2020, 2021 year.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Councilman Hoff?
Hi.
Councilman Jacobson?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
Councilman Ryan?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item E11. League statement on Minnesota State's Legislature's COVID-19 Workers Comp Bill. Go ahead, Jenny.
Thank you, so I have prepared just a, a bit of information, or I provided a couple of the league um, statements that have come out in the past week, and then I took the opportunity to draft a resolution, um, based on what's happening, um, with the workers' compensation um, potential impacts, um, based on the legislature's approval, um, to, to fund um, um, public safety and healthcare workers, um, potential COVID-19 health-related, um, issues or, um, health-related, yeah, issues that they might have. Um, I think the goal is certainly to ensure that, um, that these, you know, essential employees have the coverage that they need and the healthcare that they need, um, but, um, the, the bill basically created this unfunded situation where, um, the workers' comp program just, there's could be a, a, a potential large impact to the city, um, and to the state and to the program and, and, and everything like that. So, I wanted to provide some information for the council to review, to give feedback on. I'm really looking to just ask the legislature and the governor to find some other funding sources and not put this on the work comp programs because, um, they're not, they're not created to sustain something like this at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I read her, her memo, I thought it incorporated all of the things that I was concerned about in there, I thought it was very well done and I'd recommend that we authorize her to send it out.
Set in the form of a motion?
You can make it a motion, that's fine.
Do I hear a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right.
Second by Johnson, discussion on the motion. I would just, uh, say, you know, as, as a, as mayor and as a citizen, I think, you know, I disagree with the state on this. Um, I think making special provisions again, um, is not necessarily in the best interest, but being the legislature has or did, um, propose this, the governor signed it, and it is unfunded, I do think it's in, it's in the city's best interest to, um, ask legislature and the governor to fund what they have put in place. Any other comments? Hearing none. Councilman Jacobson?
Hi.
Councilman Hoff?
Hi.
Councilman Ryan?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
Item E11 on our agenda passes.
Thank you, I will down to the league and to our elected officials.
Thank you, Jenny.
The state, yeah.
Number 12, item E12, draft sewer ordinance. It's in our, there's a draft in our, in our packet for review, um, if anybody has any comment on it at this point in time?
It's, uh, yeah. Mr. Mayor, it's, it's a little complicated, is, is the intention of the Public Works Committee to hold the public hearing and everything else and then bring it to the council? Or are they going to ship it over to planning and zoning to have them, uh, hold the public hearing and then to the council? Just how, mechanically, do you want to handle that?
It's a very good question.
We didn't, we didn't go quite that far, um, what we did was we, this is the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was the second draft that we saw, and then we made a couple of adjustments to it, and then it's now coming to the rest of the council to do all the seats. And it still does have to go P and Z, and then, um, if we have to make any further adjustments to it, we can. But, um, I know, I live in one public hearing. And then go from there. It, it's nowhere near as complicated as the old one was, it's a simple reading. So, Tom did do a really good job on it, and the thing I liked about it, and what I would, you know, we need feedback from everybody on, is, um, the commercial, the square footage issue of that requiring meters, et cetera, those things. Um, trying to, to come up with a better way to, you know, and the, so, really what we want, everybody to look at this and bring any questions you have up to Tom, or even to, and or Brittany, and or Jenny, and just let them know. And then it'll be a public hearing at, um, P and Z eventually, hopefully sooner than later. And then, uh, we can get this passed before summer construction starts kicking. So that we're not throwing, uh, the contractors and stuff. You know, we're telling them one thing and then we got to come back and try and tell them something. The others, we're just having contractors come through some kind of a, you know, uh, speaking with Tom or the city and saying, okay, well, you do know what you're doing. We don't have somebody that's some fly-by-night come out of nowhere and all of a sudden we end up having problems now. Something like that, and that, that was a, Tom can explain that a lot better, but we, you know, we've had some problems in the past with that. That's something we'd like to eliminate, so that.
So you, you, you want us to read and make, give comments if we have any to you within the next two weeks?
Uh, not to me. Jenny and Tom.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Gary, Mike?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. So, please, uh, please email probably Tom and Jenny and, um, give them your feedback.
I think we were shooting for May's.
Public Works?
P and Z.
May's.
P and Z.
P and Z meeting.
Well, we can't do that if we're going to have a public hearing based on noticing, so, so. Works it.
You, you, you can go through the Public Works and go directly to the council for the public hearing at the council level.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that too, so.
It'll probably take a little longer.
Well, what I really want to see, Don, is I want to see Public Works and P and Z working hand in hand on these things so that there's almost like a check and balance there, so if somebody forgets something, the other one catches it as they go.
You realize that if you, if you depend on the P and Z, you're going to have rig zonuts and coffee.
Yeah, do you like chocolate or do you like vanilla glaze on top?
Either way.
Okay, so get, so please review, get your responses to Tom and Jenny in the next couple of weeks. Moving on then, on the agenda this evening, item E13, discussion regarding further closure of city facilities to the public, um, there's been a memo by Jenny, um, with recommendations, hopefully, uh, had time to look those over, but Jenny, if you, you have anything you want to say, or would you just looking for thoughts and comment?
Um, the only thing I wanted to add was, um, for Spirits of Niswa, I did, um, add a note that said, um, Brian and I were still kind of working through the details, and, um, when I spoke with him the other day, um, he is also in agreement that we would, you know, move back to our normal scheduled hours um, once the shelter in place lifted, um, assuming there's no hiccups in that, that would be the, the game plan for that as well. So, um, just wanted to speak to that. Otherwise, I think we've made some good adjustments, um, for staff and, um, trying to just, you know, keep smart with, with everything as it's changing every couple of days and, you know, we'll make adjustments if we need to, but I, I, um, I'm happy with, uh, with how things have gone these last few weeks. So, any questions about my recommendations?
I'd rather let, let Jenny make the final determination of what needs to be done rather than us sitting a little too far away to know about the day-to-day operations.
Well, yeah, and I've had some discussion with Jenny. Staff has been working on, um, as they've gotten caught up with, with the immediate day-to-day things, um, and working on going through old files, cleaning things up, kind of, uh, working on the list of those things that never get done. And, um, you know, there, if things, you know, if the the governor and the state opens business back up again, we will likely be okay if there's further extensions we may need to take a look at. Different scenarios, but, um, as Jenny said, I think just we take it day by day, week by week and, um, and, uh, I agree, Don, let, let Jenny make recommendations as to what she sees.
Um, if that's the consensus of the council, that would, that's great, um, the only thing I would ask to be consistent in, um, if the council can make a motion or approve, um, keeping city facilities closed to the public through May 4th, because we haven't, we hadn't gone that far the last time we met and discussed it, so that would be the only motion I would ask for to them.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Any discussions or clarifications?
I'm just kind of curious on how it, how things are working with permits and everything like that, even working with the outside public, or is it all going smoothly or? You know, normal window operations?
Yeah, yeah, it has, um, as far as staff has communicated, they've been able to, uh, like planning and zoning, I know Brittany's been fielding a lot of calls and I think she's been able to make the exchange of information work, um, well, and so we've been, they've adjusted very well with that.
Sure.
I know the motion is about, maybe we're, you know, the keeping the public out of City Hall basically, but what, if we have an employee that voices concern and is capable of working from home, can we just let them? I mean, that would obviously be your call.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna say, uh, yeah, leave that to Jenny.
That's fine. Okay.
Okay. We will, uh, roll call vote then, um, Councilman Ryan?
Hi.
Councilman Hoff?
Hi.
Councilman Johnson?
Hi.
And Councilman Jacobson?
Hi.
Item E13 on our, on our agenda this evening passes. Next on the agenda this evening is old business, and, um, did you, the first two we just kind of want to, well, one, okay, tabled, item F1 is tabled until May, item F2, um, council discussion liaison structure tabled until May. Um, item F3, update from, uh, Mayor Heidman regarding road maintenance agreement between the city of Niswa and Lake Edward Township. Um, I do have some information that I would like to share this evening, um, no action, uh, maybe feedback if, if, uh, so desired. So I did meet with the, uh, Lake Edward Township Board of Supervisors, their regular, regularly scheduled meeting was last evening at 7:00 PM. Uh, we had a good meeting, uh, basically, I, I'll just kind of read through kind of the discussion, the findings and so on, it's, uh, fairly short. And then, um, and then, um, I'll, you'll kind of know where they're at and, um, and we'll, uh, if there's any thoughts, discussion, uh, like to hear it. So, findings and discussion, the East Clark Lake Road is 2.2 miles long in its entirety. The common road shared with Lake Edward is eight tenths of a mile, the Lake Edward portion is 1.4 miles. And during our discussion, we talked about stopping, um, in each municipality, plowing up to a certain point. Um, it was kind of handy that they had, uh, Lake Edward Township had their, uh, plow person in attendance. Um, the discussion kind of centered around the time it would take for, it takes to plow that road, either Niswa or Lake Edward Township, uh, to stop, push snow out of the way, turn around, um, and each doing a portion of it would take basically about as, close to as long as it would for one entity to do the complete road. If there was an emergency and by chance responders to the emergency coming from County Road 13 direction, they may not be able to navigate in heavy snow if, say, just the north half of, or the north portion, um, that we share in common is, uh, plowed and the other is not. Um, so it, it seemed mutually agreeable that probably made sense to, um, for one entity to plow the, the whole road. Lake Edward Township was fine with us plowing the road, um, they said that they have 40 miles of road that they plow, and, um, they stated, um, that they just cannot get there any sooner, um, because of the way their route lays out. And, uh, they were very understanding that, you know, that we have, uh, one to two to three citizens that may have, you know, kind of special needs, so to speak, um, with doctors' appointments, potential emergencies, whatever. And they were very comfortable with, um, with looking to improve that for our citizens. Um, they, uh, you know, their thought was, their, their, their thinking is that, um, and I tend to agree with it, because of time, it may be best for Niswa to just take and do that whole stretch of road. They said that, uh, they would, um, take care of improvements and maintenance with the exception of snow plowing, um, they do travel that road, um, as part of getting from point A to B to C during their snow plowing and that if we, um, that they would be willing to do the salting and the sanding just to save us the expense. But they said it, you know, that would be up to us, they said they would gladly do it. So, um, I did, uh, I, I traveled the road, um, and, um, so, so starting, just to give an idea of timeframe, starting from a standstill on either County Road 13 or 18, and then taking off and going 27 miles an hour through that stretch of road. Um, the eight tents that the city has shared with Lake Edward Township takes 1 minute and 46 seconds one way. Starting again from, uh, a stop, it takes, or in driving 27 miles an hour, it takes 4 minutes and 50 seconds to go the full length of the road one way. Um, we talked about just timing and so on, and, um, if we get allowed five minutes for a truck to turn around and head back the other way and it's 4 minutes and 50 seconds back, it takes less than 15 minutes to plow that road. Um, just to give you an idea of what the time commitment by the city. Just to give you an idea of what the time commitment by the city would be. Let me see what else we have here. Last of it, I think we have already stated. So we left, we left it that I would bring this information to the council and that we would we would, you would hear it, that we would look to get it on, get some, get some wording put together and get it on our next get it to them and get it on our next council agenda for next month and then see if we can get it finalized. Questions?
Should this possibly go to Public Works first? I'd like to get their comments and Tom's comments on it too.
Well, I would, you know, my thought on that, Gary, is yes and no. It's the city's job to provide service to its citizens. And I certainly am not opposed to getting feedback. But if it, if what you're looking for is, do they want to do it or not, or do they feel one way or the other or not about it, I think our citizens are are where we're.
No, I, I'm not necessarily saying that, not necessarily saying that, but I do think it, it may not be as easy as just saying it takes 10 minutes. There may be more to it and I just would like to hear their comment.
Well, something I would suggest there is maybe give, maybe give, maybe give the department head a call and talk with them. You know what? The information I have comes from a person who drives a truck and, and does the road and is somewhat familiar with it. So I'm certainly not, not disagreeing with you, but I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what you're looking to get from it. And I'd like that to be really clarified because just what they think, what they.
Sometimes sometimes you don't know what you don't know. We have a Public Works Committee. This seems like something that should be funneled through them.
Well, at the last council meeting that we had here at the council, the Public Works Director indicated that he was not able to make any progress with them on it. And I stepped in and said.
I don't know how that's relevant here.
Well, it, well, it is in the sense that there was no complaint by that department that they couldn't do it. Again, I'm like, what is, I'm just asking, what is it that you're looking for? You're looking to, to see if they they can do it, they can't do it, it's going to take three more minutes than what somebody else says it's going to take? What is it they really looking for?
Is there an additional cost? Goes along with this liability? Are they going to pay us a little bit more or whatever? I think the Public Works Committee may look at those issues which were not addressed in what you just told us. And I think it's probably just proof. You may be right, Fred, that everything's great. They put the buzzing on it and away we go, but the cost and the time and whatever, I think they should at least look at it.
So you're saying who should, you're saying who should look at it? The director and the city administrator or the whole Public Works Committee? What's your, what is your? I'm just looking to, I'm just looking to get this very clear so that we all know exactly what we are. I want to know what you're asking so that we can make sure that we handle things appropriately.
I, I think the whole Public Works Committee should take a look at it. If it's different than the road maintenance agreement we already have, there may be some implications that we're not aware of just by what, what you picked up at the meeting. And I think it's just prudent to look at. It may be nothing, but let's just find out.
Okay, so we'd like to see it run by the Public Works Committee. Is that correct?
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, I agree. I think any recommendation on this should come from them.
Okay, I would, I would, I stand in disagreement there because this is a citizen service matter. I certainly would support it going to Public Works Committee for comment. But I mean, I've ultimately, I think what we are tasked to do is support and take care of our citizens and make sure that they have access in and out of their property for all purposes, but especially medical and so on. So I'm certainly not.
And.
Fine to.
And I'm, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, Fred, but but everything we do is, maybe not everything, but 99% of all we do is in citizens' interests. We have a committee to deal with these sorts of things. I think it should flow through them.
Sure. And I, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just bring this up. And again, I'm not in disagreement. But I do question, why did this not come up at the last meeting? Why, why is it now that there's been progress made that all of a sudden it seems like, oh my gosh, now we have to go to other committees? I just, I think the council could be, and people could do better, a better job of preparing and so that things don't drag out so long.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the timeline is going to increase. You bring good information to the committee and I think that there may be questions that we didn't know when we, we said, go ahead and talk to them, Fred. And I think it just, the combined information that other people bring to it could, could be helpful to, so we don't step in a hole or something like that.
And, and I can agree, I certainly can, I certainly agree with that.
Okay.
So we will, so I've given you the information from that meeting. We will get, I say we, Jenny and I and John's right here, will see that it gets to Public Works Committee for discussion. I'll probably attend that meeting and go through it with that group and then from there we'll look to draft an agreement or to whatever extent we will, we, we decide to present it, present something to Lake Edward Township.
Sounds good.
Okay. That's it for old business. Council reports, I don't have anything other than what we just discussed, council members? About, we'll start out with Councilman Hoff?
I'll just say thanks, everybody, for their flexibility and, you know, dedication during these crazy times. For all the staff and what have you out there that are listening. Unprecedented and trying to puddle our way through it, I guess.
Thank you, Governor Walz. Councilman Jacobson?
Just a question of Jenny, the April 21st Board of Appeal and Equilization. I'll be there and Mike, I think you'll be there, but do we have a third person yet or are we going to be legal?
We, we do. Thank you for that question. Councilmember Ryan is able to attend, so we will have a quorum. Thank you to everyone. I missed that one a little bit, so I'm happy that we were able to adjust, but.
Okay. And just to comment that maybe we should have all our meetings like this. They seem to go faster than if we're there live.
But there is something to that. Councilman Johnson?
No, I was just going to ask about that April 21st meeting. So you have the quorum, it sounds like, but are you, so you are able to do that in person?
We are, yes. I let the, the county asked if we had a strong preference. I said, no, this was probably over a week ago when we had the conversation. So what they're going to do is just have one person come into the council chambers at a time, review the issue and then have them leave. So if we have a handful of people, they will wait in the lobby area and we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Councilman Ryan?
Nothing else for me?
Councilman Ryan has nothing to report on, so we have our list of upcoming meetings and dates. Is there a motion to adjourn?
You have it.
Second by Ryan. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Signing off. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.